In my way.
Sitting in the dark.
Room chair.
Seven hundred candles.
Okay, I'll call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 7:02 PM for Thursday, October 17th, 2019 will start. Pledge allegiance to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I move to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Well, I'd like to add one.
Okay.
I'd like to talk a little bit about a certified local government program.
Okay.
It is, I had a chance to talk to the people at the Tri Museum, the neighbors like to investigate it for the town. I'll talk about it a little bit later.
Okay, let's, I'm not sure if Julian's gonna make it, so.
New business.
We'll put it under new business. We'll call it 10B.
We have a 10B.
Okay, we'll call it 10C. So I move to add certified local government as new business item 10C to the agenda. Is there a second? Discussion?
Is there any documentation about that?
No, there's no documentation about that. Further discussion? Is there a second? Okay, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I move to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
All of us, there's a discussion. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everyone's here. I move to approve, well, I should say too, that at 7:30, we're gonna recess the Board of Selectmen meeting for a town meeting and then reconvene after the town meeting adjourns. So now I'll move to that we approve the regular meeting minutes of October 3rd, 2019. Is there a second? Discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Communications, I have no communications. Are there any communications? Okay, public participation. Is there any? Yes.
Just that I only have one people to, I'm the chair of the Gladbrooke Millsite Remediation Committee, and I just wanted to do a quick update on where we're at. Nothing major to report, but first and foremost, as I know elections and changes and everything that's happening, I did want to take the opportunity to thank this board for having this committee and giving us the chance to work on this. It's something near and dear to my heart, so I appreciate that, and I just wanted to say that. We continue to have open communication with now Collins Aerospace, formerly UTC, Hamilton, whichever maybe you know it by. We continue to have communication with them. Right now, the pace has slowed down, but it's slow and steady sort of towards what I've talked about this entire time, which are two main things, not having this contamination pile in the middle of town, which I think most folks agree we don't want, even if it has an impermeable barrier over it. We don't want this pile of personages sitting in our town. So the main goal right there is to get that removed, and then, of course, to keep the structurally sound historical buildings preserved and hopefully remediated and reused for the town. So right now, with Collins, I know that they're doing work on their end in terms of finding investors or someone to buy the property, so it can move towards this, what hopefully we envisioned would be a great area for economic development in the town. But we're still waiting on them to sort of start these working level meetings. But as I said, we still have open communication with them, communication with all the different groups involved, whether that be DEEP, also meeting with state economic development, still staying in contact with state historic preservation, because this is a national historic register site, and any other groups that still come and folks that come to our meetings and offer their input. So that's short and sweet for what we're doing, and I hope it continues to remain a priority, and that we're still talking about it and still working towards it, because it could end up being really beneficial to Gladbrooke, meaning that it will be beneficial to the whole town.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, can I ask you a question? You know, what's the next follow-up that you have with them, and what's the potential for what that follow-up is gonna entail?
So right now, we're kind of waiting on them. We know that they have some sort of real estate company, but we don't know any details on that. Like I said, we're still waiting on these working level meetings. We've been waiting for a while to sort of start that.
Yeah.
But we still talk to them and see how that progresses.
Good, thank you. Okay, further public participation, yes?
Jeffrey Ostrout, Two Rice Street. Kind of two parts here, I'll try to make it quick. Mr. Major, last week you stated you wrote the explanation of the charter revision changes that will be on the election ballot November. If that was so, why was the responsibility of getting it to distribution handed off to a community member who is not a current board member, commission member, or employee of the town?
Where are you getting that information from?
John's email.
An email? I was down at the Allied Community Center, which is part of our town, just this past week, and he was producing those flyers that are going out. So I'm not sure where you're getting your information. I sent him the flyer and an email.
Second part, on Monday, September 30th, an email was sent from John Matthews to the print shop with two attached files containing the charter revision ballot question explanation. Email stated that these files were approved for printing and mailing with the target date of October 4th. Last week, revisions were made and approved by the Board of Selectmen on October 10th. That same night, they asked if the first draft is already printed, and if so, what the taxpayers now paying for two sets of prints? He replied no and no. An inquiry is made that evening with the print shop on the town. I received an email confirming early morning on the 11th, before town hall had even opened, stating that the first draft will be mailed today, just waiting on a check for postage. So it seems to me that the first draft is printed, which taxpayers will be liable for, and taxpayers are also liable for the second. So I guess I have two questions. Why did you lobby for charter changes that are coming up for a ballot vote to a specific voting for the explanations were approved and available to the public, and why did you lie about the first set of prints made?
Well, I did not lie, and so I, I don't know how to answer your question. Well, your question is, why did I lie? Unbelievable. I would thank you for your public participation. I think that it.
Did you need emails to prove it? Allies said they were.
Now, I don't need any back and forth.
You're right. Thank you.
But I will say, you check with the treasurer and see how many checks we pay.
How about the checks?
Okay, thank you. So further public participation. Okay. So now, moving right along, board and commission resignations and appointments.
I move to appoint Alfoid Sukasney, Deb Talabini, Tom Talabini, and as members of the American Heritage River Commission for regular terms expiring on November 1st, 2023.
I second.
Second.
Discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
I move to appoint Rebecca Talabini as a member of the Inland Wetland and Watercourses Agency as a regular member for a term expiring November 1st, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, would anybody else like to make some appointments?
I did a one. One through four in block and five on its own.
Okay. Okay, that brings us to new business, and Gillian isn't here, so then we'll go to approve tax refund. I'll entertain a motion to approve tax refunds.
I move to approve the tax refunds in the amount of $1,150.69 as presented to us on October 15th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now to item 10C, certified local government. Andy?
Already before last, I got a call, I got a call from the people at the Tri Museum, and they said that there is a state program which might benefit the town as well as the Tri Museum. It's called Certified Local Government Program. It's run out of the Historic Preservation Office of the Department of Economic Development, and what they do is they are looking to preserve historic sites, structures, objects, buildings, and historic districts. So they believe that there is a possibility of getting money, but it requires town participation. An organization like, like the Tri Museum can't do it on their own. They see it as an avenue for obtaining grants for their organization, but they also see it as an avenue for getting grants for the town. And so they would like to get together with the Board of Selectmen, and I suggested that they wait until after the new board takes office. They have a lot of documentation, probably a thirty-page explanation of how to do it, what to do, and what it covers and how to go about it. And they would like to come in and talk about it. It would probably be a good thing for the town to get involved in. There's really no, no financial commitment that the town has to make. It's just simply a matter of committing resources, people who are willing to work on the, on the project. And there, there are a bunch of people here in town who have interest in that, so I do believe that between the Tri Museum, and they have a grant writer that is pretty darn good, she does pretty well getting money, and the former director of the Air Museum is now working with them, and he's a great solicitor of money, has a lot of connections. And I think the combination of their resources and with the town might put together would be good for everybody.
Sounds good, I think, I've heard of.
And I'll make that, I'll make that package of stuff that I have available to whoever wants it after the election.
Well, and I think you could bring it into my office and give it to, you know, the administrative assistant right now.
Okay, why don't I just do that?
Yeah.
I have a part, a package, it's all marked up with my notes on it, but I'll get a brand new package from them and give it to you.
Okay, sounds good. All right, moving quickly, down to Selectmen comments and reports. Jason?
Okay. On October 4th, I and the other candidates for first selectmen held our first debate at the Senior Center. There will be another debate tomorrow night at 6:30 at East Windsor High School that will involve all candidates for first selectmen and for the Board of Selectmen. On October 5th, the annual Bartoberfest was held at the East Windsor Reservoir, the events of fundraiser for the East Windsor Dog Park, and they had a glorious day for it with great raffle prizes, lots of seasonal vendors, and very happy dogs at play. Yesterday, October 16th, the pension board met. They discussed an updated policy to diversify our investment strategy according to asset class allocations. This calendar year, the town defined benefit pension plan has seen a return of 13.29% and the town's other post-employment benefit fund saw a return of 14.36% over that same period of time. The pension board continues to, continues to review the RFPs for actuarial services associated with the plan. It has been a number of years since this was done, and we wanted to make sure that we weren't paying more than we needed to be. The results of the submittals shows that we in fact aren't paying more than, than what the market rate is, and because we have a longstanding relationship with Milliman, and they do a good job for the town, it was decided not to make the change there. Later on yesterday evening, the Board of Finance held their regular monthly meeting. At that meeting, the superintendent provided a detailed report about the efforts underway to address the shortfall associated with the cafeteria fund. This has been a long persistent area in need of correction, and it's clear from the superintendent's presentation that they are looking at all reasonable alternatives to address that. This coming Saturday, I'll be participating in the guest bagger event hosted by Geiser Supermarket with other candidates for office in November. We will be accepting tips, which will be donated to the town's power pack program, which benefits students in East Windsor schools. That is all I have, respectfully submitted.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, the, I talked before about the guide rails and Windsorville and other places that people are complaining about, because the, the old pole ones were knocked down and, you know, this past week or so, they have put up on the guide rails there, and so people called me, said, you know, glad that that's finally done, and so that's, Lenny gets a good, good grade for that, because they, they do look good. It's a lot, lot better than it was.
Okay, Steve?
The only thing I got is Jimmy Strempfer is holding a chin dig over his farm this Saturday. They're gonna have horses running around over there and doing jumps, and it's kind of Halloween oriented kind of thing. As you all know, Jim was in the hospital. I guess he had a stent put in, he wasn't feeling very well. And he's out and about getting around. Some of the things that he would do, like with the hayride with the horses, he can't, because it's too strenuous for him to do that right now. It should be a pretty good time over there.
Is there any start timer for that, or just show up, or what?
You know something? I didn't even, I had been trying to catch up to him for the past two or three days, but I wanted to do the hayride thing with the tractor and the trail, you know? And that might still happen, I don't know, but I'll catch up to him tomorrow, see if he wants to do that, you know?
Okay.
On Saturday, should be a pretty good time over there.
Okay, Andy, do you have anything?
I do not. The next meeting is next Monday. There were, there was no information to report since our last meeting.
Okay, and I don't have anything. So, I'd say we're ready to adjourn.
We don't have an executive session later?
We don't have an executive session later.
I move to adjourn.
Okay, we'll adjourn until the town meeting.
In a second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here's some things.
Guys can talk, we're, we're done.
Camera's still on. This is being recorded.
How you doing?
How are you? Good to meet you. Yeah, good to meet you.
Do you go by Charles?
Charlie.
So probably on Monday or Tuesday, if you have some time to talk to him, he's got a twenty minute interview on the phone. Because I have a story about his admissions for first selection. I thought it was. So we dropped him on the same day.
Yeah, that's fine. Right, right. Throwing away last name.
For you?
So literally like.
Jason.
You have to sit in the audience.
You're a speechman.
So I have no way to.
I can make my friend.
No, I'm totally down with that. I actually gotta take that one.
I took.
Oh, yeah, that's quite different.
No, but you can vote for a majority because you consider the first election.
One of us is going back to that.
It feels more correct for the board to select.
This is the same thing this is.
Oh, you say.
I would think that would.
Don't.
If you're saying according to.
Whatever it says to the charter.
So you're actually November 15th, I swear.
Why do you have a charter?
There'd be a question of.
Actually, you do for your.
Yeah, that'll be.
I just got a, a text from the university, just about their overall strategy, they said that school and schools are. Four trucks outside my house, really with the.
Yeah, trying to verify your house, but I was just turned around.
So.
Today is.
Okay, I'll call this town meeting order, October 17th, 2019. First order of business is to elect a moderator. Are there any nominations for a moderator?
I'd like to nominate Bob Mayner.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jason Bowser.
Second.
Okay. Any further nominations? Okay, how many?
I'll move the nominations to be called.
Okay.
Second.
How many would, raise your hands if you want Bob Mayner to be. Okay, raise your hands if you want Jason Bowser. Jason Bowser has it. Jason Bowser has. Remember. Emotion. I think we've met. And you are? You cast. Yeah. Okay. This is your package. Here's your. Passed out the. Item. Okay. I'll now ask the town clerk to read the town meeting public notice.
Warning, notice for special town meeting and referendum vote by voting machine or paper ballot. East Windsor, Connecticut. All electors and persons qualified to vote in town meeting of the town of East Windsor, Connecticut, the town, are hereby notified that the Board of Selectmen of the town are convening a special town meeting to be held at Town Hall 11 Rice Street, Broadbrook, Connecticut, 7:30 p.m. on October 17th, 2019 for the following purposes. Item number one, to consider and vote on an amendment to ordinance number 66-2, creating a sewer authority as approved at the October 3rd, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. Item number two, to consider and vote on the ordinance establishing a tax exemption for exemption of real and personal property acquired by certain tax exempt institutions as presented at the Board of Selectmen meeting held on March 21st, 2019. Item number three, to consider a resolution but not vote on approving and authorizing the first selectmen to sign the amended facility sharing agreement, regional animal control facility agreement as approved at the October 3rd, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. All those persons qualified to vote in town meetings of the town are hereby further notified that pursuant to section 7-7 of the Connecticut general statutes and the town charter, the Board of Selectmen have removed the above item number three on the call of this special town meeting for submission to the voters of the town who are qualified to vote at town meetings for a yes or no vote on the resolution by voting machine or paper ballot on the following question. Shall the amended facility sharing agreement, regional animal control facility agreement as approved at the October 3rd, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting be approved and the first selectmen be authorized to sign the amended facility sharing agreement, regional animal control facility agreement? The vote will be conducted at the Town Hall 11 Rice Street, Broadbrook, Connecticut, and the Town Hall Annex 25 School Street, East Windsor, Connecticut, as the case may be for voters authorized to vote at such polling places during the hours between 6 o'clock a.m. and 8 o'clock p.m. on October 24th, 2019. Item number four, to consider but not vote on the ordinance regarding the creation of Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund, C.I.F., as approved at the October 3rd, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. All those persons qualified to vote in town meetings of the town are hereby further notified that pursuant to section 7-7 of the Connecticut general statutes and the town charter, the Board of Selectmen have removed the above item number four on the call of this special town meeting for submission to the voters of the town who are qualified to vote at town meetings for a yes or no vote on the ordinance by voting machine or paper ballot on the following question. Shall the ordinance regarding the creation of the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund, C.I.F., which was approved at the Board of Selectmen meeting on October 3rd, 2019, be approved? The vote will be conducted at the Town Hall 11 Rice Street, Broadbrook, Connecticut, and the Town Hall Annex 25 School Street, East Windsor, Connecticut, as the case may be for voters authorized to vote at such polling places during the hours between 6 o'clock a.m. and 8 o'clock p.m. on October 24th, 2019. Item number five, to consider but not vote on the ordinance regarding the distribution of funds from the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund as approved at the October 3rd, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. All those persons qualified to vote in the town meetings of the town are hereby further notified that pursuant to section 7-7 of the Connecticut general statutes and the town charter, the Board of Selectmen have removed the above item number five on the call of this special town meeting for submission to the voters of the town who are qualified to vote at town meetings for a yes or no vote on the ordinance by voting machine or paper ballot on the following question. Shall the ordinance regarding the distribution of funds from the Town of East Windsor Casino Impact Fund, which was approved at the Board of Selectmen meeting on October 3rd, 2019, be approved? The vote will be conducted at the Town Hall 11 Rice Street, Broadbrook, Connecticut, and the Town Hall Annex 25 School Street, East Windsor, Connecticut, as the case may be for voters authorized to vote at such polling places during the hours between 6 o'clock a.m. and 8 o'clock p.m. on October 24th, 2019, dated at East Windsor, Connecticut, this 10th day of October, 2019, East Windsor Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Julian. I will now read the eligibility to vote as outlined in Connecticut general statute, section 7-6. At any town meeting other than a regular or special town election, or in any meeting of any fire, sewer, or school district, or any other municipal subdivision of any town incorporated by any special act, any person who is an elector of such town may vote and any citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years, of the age of 18 years or more who jointly or separately is liable to the town, district, or subdivision for taxes assessed against him on an assessment of not less than $1,000 on the last completed grand list of such town, district, or subdivision, or who would be so liable if not entitled to an exemption under Connecticut general statute subdivision 17, 19, 22, 23, 25, or 26 of sections 12-81, may vote unless restricted by the provisions of any special act relating to such town, district, or subdivision. I'm now going to ask whoever has resolution number one to read that movement, and I'll ask for a second.
Paul Anderson. Item number one, to consider and vote on an amendment to ordinance number 66-2, creating a sewer authority as approved at the October 3rd, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. I move the foregoing resolution be adopted.
Paul Anderson? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, who was the second? Mr. Smithky? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those, oh, I'm sorry.
I'll just say that Paul has asked for this change, and the selectmen felt that it would, it would be valid. We had a lawyer review it and make the change, so it seems to be very appropriate.
Thank you.
Can you give us a two-sentence description of what the change is?
I'm going to ask the chairman of the WPCA to elaborate on that. Mr. Anderson, would you mind?
Certainly. Okay. The ordinance as it stands from 1966 created a sewer authority. We are the water pollution control authority by state statute, so the majority of change here is to bring the ordinance up to date and incorporate items that were missing to properly explain what the sewer authority is and is responsible for and in agreement with everything the people see.
Any other discussion on the question? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Resolution number two.
Natalie Ryan. To consider, approve, and vote on the ordinance establishing a tax exemption for exemption of real and personal property acquired by certain tax exempt institutions as presented at the Board of Selectmen meeting held on March 21st, 2019, I move the foregoing resolution to be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hoffman. Any discussion on the question? Now.
I'm going to ask for the same simple summary of what this is.
So my understanding of this is that it is a, is a special ordinance that is being put forward to allow for the acquisition of property at the historical society to be waived of their tax obligation. That's, that's it in a nutshell. Any other questions? Any discussion? I'm sorry, I can't see in the back. Mr. Baker.
I'm just curious, like, what are the parameters of claiming a historical preservation exemption? You know, I understand, you know, kind of picked it up from the ordinance that, that they would want that and they would qualify for that, but could anybody else qualify for that exemption? You know, so it seems vague to me.
Thank you. So that question was asked at the Board of Selectmen meeting, and the response that was provided by the other attorney from Uptick, Kelly and Spelacy was that this was specific to the historical society, but I will ask our current attorney for confirmation of that.
I believe that's correct. Right.
Don't want to disagree with your partner?
Don't want to disagree with mine.
I'll, I'll just elaborate it out a little bit. When a nonprofit organization purchases property, they have to pay, they won't pay taxes on that after the grand list, the new grand list is put into effect on October 1st, but the time period from when they purchase the property until the new grand list is put into effect, they'd have to pay the taxes for it. This would allow them to not pay those taxes for that small period of time, and it is written to be, in a sense, specific, but then it can be general because it puts dates in there that says the property has to be bought between, in 2018, and so it will not perpetuate in the future.
Right. Marry.
Do you know about tax revenue losses regarding that? Property?
I don't recall that coming up at the Selectmen's meeting. Do you remember that?
No, I don't.
Do we know how much of property they're planning on purchasing?
It's property they have purchased. It's the additional property at the historical society.
So that's where they bought that bar and all that other stuff.
Right. So Bob, Bob specified that the language pertains to acquisitions in 2018. It's referencing specifically that, that parcel.
Want to make sure that was. So if they were to buy another parcel, that would not be covered under this ordinance?
Right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, bring your hand. My second time.
Throw us a aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand. Motion clearly passes. Resolution number three.
To consider a resolution but not vote on approving and authorizing the first selectmen to sign the amended facility sharing agreement, regional animal control facility agreement as approved at the October 3rd, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. Move to consider but not vote on the foregoing resolution.
I'll second that. No loss.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Anderson.
Paul Anderson, 89 Main Street. A number of times, there was a request that there be a discussion with the bargaining unit as to the impact of the animal control officer being sent out of town as a regular part of their job. Did we ever get an answer on that?
To my knowledge, no, but I'll ask Bob.
First of all, the idea of being sent out of town can be misleading because this animal, regional animal control shelter is on Sullivan Avenue, and it's a minute and a half from the East Windsor Town Line. Also, if you measure the time it takes to get from the police department to the animal control shelter in our animal care shelter on Sullivan Avenue, it takes nine minutes. If you measure from the time of the, from the police station and where I'll point to the, our animal control shelter in Broadbrook, it takes nine minutes also. So there's not, there's not a big difference in anything. Gee, as far as the bargaining unit goes, the animal control officer is primarily one affected, she's a, or he, she now, is a part-time worker who works 16 hours a week. This is a managerial decision, and if the town votes to have this use, this regional animal control shelter, then we would certainly talk to the bargaining unit about this transition. It's not a big thing. It's not a showstopper at all. And then just, just to emphasize a little bit, this, by doing this, by joining this regional animal care shelter, we would save the town $61,000 that are needed to upgrade the, our current antiquated animal shelter to the minimum standards that, that the state regulations have now required. So just think about, because I've sat here through the budget times and what $61,000 could do. It certainly could go to the schools. It certainly could go to the libraries. It can go wherever the voters choose it to go. In addition to the $61,000 we'd save, that would be an expense we'd have to put out immediately, we would save $400 a year annually by going to that animal control shelter, and it'd be, it's a better shelter, it has, it has higher standards, so the animals would fare much better. So this is a good thing for the town of East Windsor, in my opinion, and we certainly will talk with and accommodate any concerns that the bargaining unit, and even now, we were in, are in bargaining with the police officers, and there's some question as to whether the animal control officer should be even a part of the sworn officer's bargaining unit, but right now she is, so we will talk with them.
So the question being, has the conversation happened with the bargaining unit? The answer is no.
Exactly. Thank you.
I just want to make two points on what Mr. Mayner just said. First of all, I don't understand what proximity or mileage has to do with the decision that we make. We would still be parsing this out to another municipality, and when he speaks about the standards of our current shelter, I think that it's time, instead of giving away, giving our tax dollars and our business to other people outside of our town, we start trying to build up what we have here in our town.
Thank you. Mr. Ashell.
When we talk about the timing, it says it's about a minute past. Do the dogs, is there some sort of rule that dogs have to go to the police station, get a call printed or something first, and that's where we're going from the mileage? Or could it be getting picked up on the edge of Enfield and still having them go?
It has to do with the point of acquisition. Thank you. Mr. Gagloff.
Keith Gagloff, Keithville Street. I'm, I'm going to speak out in favor of supporting the move to the Tyler Regional Shelter. All of the economic and financial reasons support that. The comment that was just made respectfully about sending money out of town is, is really not accurate. The money is being paid for, to ever-source right now. It's being paid for electricity and heat, and instead of paying ever-source the money, we would be paying the Tyler Regional Shelter the money so that they can provide the support. Most importantly, I want to reference a story that was on Facebook recently about an abandoned dog that was left in somebody's place of business outdoors, and there was a gentleman who came to sort of the rescue of this dog. The dog was placed in a shelter, and the dog was stressed, the dog was barking incessantly, the dog was aggressive, and this gentleman went into the shelter every day to sit with this dog and comfort this dog so that this dog wouldn't be so stressed, and then because of the community outpouring the support, the animal was placed with a shelter. It's not ready to go home, but, I mean, with a, with a rescue shelter. This, this current, our, our current shelter is. This, this current, our current shelter is used probably ever throughout the year, but the problem is, is when animals go into that shelter, they are there virtually 22 out of the 24 hours alone. The animal control officer comes in in the morning to feed them and walk them, and then they come in at night to feed them and walk them, and the animals are stressed. Thank goodness for this person to come in and to sit with this dog. He points out two problems. These pets are isolated, they're stressed, they're left alone in this facility, it's not the right place for these pets, and second, we have some great people in this community. For someone to come in and come, come sit with that dog, to help him through the stressful time, is something amazing, but that doesn't happen routinely for the pets that are placed in our current shelter. They're isolated, they're kept alone, they should be in a shelter that has other dogs, other people, adoption facilities, rabies clinics, it should be in a state-of-the-art facility, not our obsolete facility. I support the change.
I saw a hand in the back.
Charlene Baker, 340 Ry Street. I'm actually speaking from experience, not just from, I'm not trying to pull anybody's heartstrings. I worked for the Harper pound, and I worked for East Windsor in their pound. The dogs in Harper, all those dogs, are a lot more scared than the dogs who are in quiet and hidden. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Austin, I saw your hand.
Thank you. I'm not against having this regional center, but I'm very curious, because it is a regional center and there's going to be multiple towns paying, what's our share of the cost?
I can talk to that.
Mr. Maynard.
Yes. The three other towns that are currently in that animal care shelter are Manchester, East Hartford, and South Windsor. And the way they determine the cost of each town's share is to divide the cost by the number of dog, I'll call them dog days, or the number of days your dogs use the shelter. The highest shelter is, Manchester went about, almost 2,000, 1,912 animal care days, whereas ours last year was 148. So, and the others, so Manchester's a 46%, East Hartford 35%, South Windsor 19%, we'd end up at 3.6%, so we would pay about $1,700 a year. And right now, we're paying about over $2,100 a year, so that's why I said there'd be a savings in money to the town, and I personally believe they'd get better care.
So a couple of things. Are those numbers that you quoted, or those percentage, are those permanent, or should the, the number of dogs that we have increase, then our expenses would increase as well? Or is that, is that a fixed cost now? Are we, when we sign the contract, are we signing it that for the next five years, our percentage is going to be 3%?
No, it's, it's based on the number of animal care days that we use. So if we double the number of animals we use, it won't double the cost, but it could very well, our costs go from 3.6% up to 5. something percent.
So the number is not a stagnant number? If we had an influx of dogs, or if Manchester suddenly had less, our expenses are going to go up? A question that I had raised at a Board of Selectmen meeting a month or so ago was, right now, there are three towns, but should one of those towns pull out, what would that do to our expenses? And Mr. Maynard, your response to me was that you can't speculate on what would happen, but you would make the decision without that. And I'm very concerned that we're going in painting a very rosy picture, which could change tomorrow, and we're not really letting everybody know with those expenses. You're saying we're going to save, we're going to save. We may not save. It may be much more expensive.
I'd like to respond to that.
If we could just, just go through the moderator, because there's a lot of people and a lot of hands, so I'll recognize the first selectman.
Thank you. I did, when you asked that question, I thought about it, and I did the calculations, and as I said, Manchester is 46%, so they're the biggest one. And right now, and they're not going to leave, we checked with everybody, nobody's going to leave, but if they left, that would mean our expenses would go from 3.6% up to 6.3%. So our cost of $1,700 a year would go up to $3,371 a year. And if you, if you look at that, that would be, we would start to lose money at that situation. We'd lose about $1,200 a year over what we're costing us now to maintain our current facility. But to do that, to maintain our current facility, we would have to pay $61,000 right out now to do that. That $1,200 a year would take us 50 years to recoup the cost that we'd have to put into the shelter now. And again, I'll say, I'm not really basing this decision completely on cost. I believe that animals would get much better care at that shelter.
Anybody else for the first time? Mr. Richards.
I got two concerns. One is the unions. I'm not a union man, sorry, Maria. I know that when you have a union, to do anything outside of the box without checking with them, conferring with the bargaining unit, and it could be fine, but that concerns me. We could end up in a lawsuit, I don't know. I'm not suggesting that's going to happen. I'm saying I don't know, and I know that you should contact people first. The second thing is, I know that insurance is funny. An example was, we tried at one point on the Economic Development Commission to use the senior buses to drive realtors around town to show them the properties. Insurance won't cover that. So we didn't. Whose vehicle is going to South Windsor? If it's not the normal course of business in the sense of, you guys do shared services when you go to Windsor Lodge, your insurance covers you, right? Or a police officer, I would, so, and the same thing with the dog, or the animal control person, when they cross over a line into South Windsor chasing the animal. But a delivery of an animal, are we insured for that? If that person's injured over there, and the insurance company doesn't cover us, are we opening ourselves to no lawsuit? I'm not saying the, the idea behind what is trying to go on is all bad, but I think some of the points about money and stuff, that's real concern. People say they're not going to back out. Well, I know a lot of phone companies, sign you up. Then they go out of business, and that's, that's just from a point of view of strictly monetary, no emotions, just, have we done our due diligence and researched this project? I think we're in a rush to pass it. If it's a really good idea, whoever is on the next board of selectmen would certainly sign up for it, if all the due diligence is done. Thank you.
For the first time, Fran.
Fran Neal, 123 Melrose Road. I have two questions. First one is, if you would clarify for me, Neil, if we go to this facility, and then for whatever reason we want to come back, how much is that going to cost us?
So the facility right now, and Bob can correct me when I misspeak, but the facility right now is grandfathered under state statute, so we need to bring it up to a certain code. If we vacate that, that grandfathering goes away. Is that accurate?
I would say that's accurate, but I should think there's some time lapse. In other words, if we vacated it tomorrow, and then we decided in two or three months we wanted to come back, I think we could invest the $61,000 and bring it up to the normal code and come back.
Not been my experience with the state, but you had a second question.
Yeah, well, I guess my first one's still unanswered because I don't have a number. What would it cost us to bring it back? It's not going to be the $61,000.
No, it's going to be more.
Yeah, it would be more.
And then the second one is, I guess I would ask for clarification as to what we are doing tonight, if we're not voting. Can you, I apologize, I just, I didn't hear it right, I think.
So, Counselor, when I get this wrong, please feel free to correct me, but under the statute that this meeting, or that these, the last three items on the agenda were noticed, we are having a town meeting that is going to be recessed to a ballot vote. So this is the portion of the town meeting on this question and on two pertaining to the casino where the debate happens, but there's no action that is going to happen tonight on any of the three. Is that fair?
Thank you.
Anyone else for the first time? Jerilyn.
Jerilyn Corso. I just have a quick question. I know we were talking about mileage and the mile it is from the border or whatever. And my question is, though, what is the process? Like, when an officer has to bring a dog, on their shift over to the pound, what does he have to do in East Windsor versus what happens when he has to bring the dog and bring him to South Windsor? Is it a different process that takes longer, or, you know, it could be just the mileage? That's my question.
So I'd ask the Chairman of the Police Commission if he could elaborate on that.
It's totally different process. In our town, we could simply just drop the dog and inform the ACO in the morning, or when they come on ship. In the South Windsor facility, you have to go through the whole process. So probably the time you collar the dog, transport the dog, log the dog in, do all the paperwork, and leave the facility, you're probably looking at an hour minimum.
Good. Thank you.
As opposed to five, 10 minutes.
Other comments for the first time?
I'm curious about the expenses. If that shelter were to say, decide they were going to make updates and increase costs, would we have say in that, or would we be on the hook for that in any way? Would that play into how much our 3% is?
Bob, can you comment on the capital outline?
Andy, can you speak to that? You're wondering, could you say again what the question is?
So if the facility in South Windsor were to decide to do updates for something above and beyond their general day-to-day maintenance and upkeep, would our, would our costs rise with that, and would we have any say in whether or not those things were completed?
Number one, you do have to say, there's a board of directors made up of the participating towns, and they do have a capital improvement program, or budget, rather, which is supplemented each year by the amount of money taken in through the fees, the dog days. So, and it has currently something in excess of $40,000 in it for capital improvements. They have not had to make any special assessments in the time, in the period of time that it's been in operation, which is 10 or 15 years, and they just recently put a brand-new roof on the building, which was the only thing that the management of that facility saw was needed. They ju, and they also just completed a brand-new parking lot. So I do not think that there's any need for any capital improvement in that facility, but as time goes on, that capital fund continues to increase each year, so it can accommodate capital expenditures without special assessment.
Does that answer your question?
I think so. I think it means that, yes, we would be on the hook, but we don't expect there to be a whole lot of improvement needs. That's what I'm understanding.
That's what I heard.
I do want to make one other comment that's a little bit more personal, personal and fundamental to my own belief, and that is, I don't think that it is sensible or good practice as a community to just allow our own facilities to lapse and then to just get rid of them because we don't want to take responsibility for them. I think that we, as a community, are better than that. I think that it makes, it makes sense for us to take care of our own, and that's where we start in order to make it better.
Any answers?
That was a statement, that wasn't a question. So is there anybody else for the first time? Bob, I, you haven't spoken on your own, right? I called on you, so I'm going to, I'm going to say this is your shot here.
So to correct the selectmen in some of their statements, number one, I'd have to be corrected if I'm wrong, but I believe the agreement between South Windsor and East Windsor would include duties and responsibilities of the ACOs. So I would question the authority of the Board of Selectmen to enter into that agreement, since that falls under the Police Commission's purview. Number one, I don't believe they have the authority to ink the contract. Number two, in regards to Selectman Hoffman's comment about the capital fund for South Windsor, in 2012, they started with a $38,000 capital fund. They have since expended $30,000 of that prior to paving a parking lot, which they had just done this past month. Paving that parking lot, I'm sure, has moved that capital fund into red. That capital fund must be replenished, so should East Windsor decide to join the Trax facility, they will be on the hook for whatever that capital fund replenishment would be. Third thing would be, the quoted cost directly from the South Windsor Chief of Police for the South, for East Windsor to join that facility was $27.60 annually. That's about $700 more than what we pay currently now. Couple other corrections. The East Windsor Animal Control Facility that we have now does need some, some repair. There are improvements that have been put forth from CIP for many years that have been ignored by this administration, and until this election year, nobody's even paid attention to them or even given any thought to it. Those improvements include an epoxy, impervious floor to the interior of the building, and the bulk of what that improvement is, the remaining $52,000, is to replace the concrete runs on the exterior of the building. That's rather important to note, because I work directly behind the Trax facility in South Windsor, it's right in my backyard, and the animals there rarely, if ever, go outside, other than the times when they were brought to the kennel and when they're released from the kennel. Other than that, they never see the light of day. The only times that they may see the light of day is on Saturdays when they do adoption days. Mind you, Manili's banquet facility is right next door. I've known Neil and Bruce Manili since 1984, over 30 years. If there's any noise that's coming from that facility, the first thing they do is call the chief, and they know them very well. They make the plate, and the dogs are kennelled back up. Very rarely do they ever come outside, so our animals are able to go freely in and outside as they, as they wish. The other thing was to correct somebody else's comments about the care of the animals. Care of the animals is provided by the ACOs, it's not provided by the facility. Our ACOs spend more one-on-one time in care with our animals here than they ever will see at that facility at Trax. At that facility at Trax, the only care they're ever going to see from the ACOs that take care of feeding and cleaning the cages is opening the opposing cage, shooing the dog into it, and filling the bowl and hosing up the opposing cage. That's the only care they ever see. So that, not what we have in East Windsor. We have caring ACOs that do spend time with the animals, they do normally spend about an hour each day. Another false claim that's been made is that they have full-time staff there. They do not have full-time staff at the Trax facility. I watch and I, and since this has come up, I watch and I pay attention, and typically they're for an hour in the morning and an hour in the evening, and that's it. They don't receive any better care there, in fact, they receive better care here. The other thing to think about, this is the house that we've provided for our animals in our town, that you have all paid for. You've all invested in this house that we put our animals in. We've just recently, two years ago, invested in a new heating system in our house for the animals. And rather than keep investing in keeping our house up to date, the Board of Selectmen has decided, not all of them, but the Board has decided that let's abandon the house, or let's pay rent to somebody else. I think that's wrong. This is our town, this is our infrastructure, this is our facility for our animals. I think we should invest what we neglected to invest these past years in this, our own facility. I'd be happy to answer any more questions as they pertain to this facility.
Let's, let's see who else has comments first. Anybody else for the first time? Mr. Dearwater.
I go up and down Sullivan Avenue every day. Numbers a lot. Every time I go past that facility, there is always, always somebody in that facility. Watch your mouth. I go up and down Sullivan Avenue every day, a number of times, and there's always somebody at that facility. One, if not two vehicles there. That's my comment.
Thank you. Anybody else for the first time? Mr. Pippen.
I've got two questions. While it isn't really a question, we haven't talked about the bargaining unit, why you a bargaining unit like it is even on the call. We're just looking to cause labor problems, even if there isn't any to start with. And number two, I question how this $61,000 number got thrown at us when the facility is grandfathered and we only have to do, work towards the plan of upgrading it. We can do this over years. It doesn't have to come out of next year's budget. And I don't think people realize that from the statements made by the first selectman led to that, that we gotta spend it right away. We don't. Am I right or am I wrong? Or do you dare answer?
I, I might. I can answer that. Mr. Leach through the chair.
Those recommendations are just that, from the state. These are recommended improvements that we make to the facility. They do not have to be done immediately at all. As a matter of fact, on CIP, we have recommended that they be spread out over three years, the cost of doing these upgrades. And it's entirely up to the town when we actually do them.
Thank you.
Does not have to be spent right away.
Mr. Susa, sorry.
I don't know if I have to give, anybody take a minute? Marie, just a reminder for our participation team that we're recording.
I have two things. The contract states that it'll be for 10 years. Within that 10 years, it also says that if two municipalities remain, then you stay involved. If two goes, then it changes the whole thing. My concern is what happens in four years if other towns, or two other towns decide to go and it leaves South Windsor and East Windsor. Are we gonna be able to afford the additional? The second thing is, I'm very concerned by residents that it's a warehouse for animals. And if you stick all the animals in there, who's gonna be responsible when the dogs all get the viral infections that go around, as we know, to all channels of animals that we currently don't have? Is that the expense on East Windsor, even though it's caused by dogs that are taken in from other towns? And then the liability, and I'm not sure, it also says in here that somebody from each town will be sitting on a board to make decisions on repairs. Has anyone looked into that? Who that individual is going to be? And when does that have to be taken into consideration?
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time?
Just a question from Bob. Just to reiterate, there is, in fact, a plan in place if the improvements want to be done.
Yes, right now.
There is.
Anyone else for the first time? Anyone for the second time? Mrs. Smalley.
No, it's not.
I'm gonna keep a list next time.
That's one alley. Somebody went before street. I have a few things, because I did go through the contract. And there are some things in here that I haven't heard talked about before. One is that we must be responsible for and insure ourselves against all claims, loss, damage, et cetera. So there is an insurance cost associated with this. We get one vote on the board out of however, so we can't control what happens. We have one vote. We're a minority. And it says that, I'll find it, I've got them all highlighted. Any other, so the annual budget includes the normal stuff as well as any other costs of expenses approved by the governing board. So we're one vote out of however many, four at the moment, I guess, if we join. There is the issue of insurance. There is, in the exhibit, each member town will be responsible for the care of their impounded animals, including feeding and medical care. And in addition, like others have said, a kennel that's got multiple animals in it, one dog barks, they all, they all bark. They don't settle back down. Thank God, when that poor dog was in our kennel, that gentleman who took care of her was able to go there and sit with her and be with her. If she was in this kennel, he wouldn't be, have that access. He wouldn't be able to do that. So she would not have gotten that calming care that she obviously needed. So I, I think, and as others have said, we should be taking care of our own house. It's not that much money to, to fix this building over time, and it makes more sense economically for the long haul.
Thank you. Anyone else for the first time? For the second time?
I'll leave the contract and the financial particulars to the experts, but I just want to say, it's disheartening that the focus of this discussion and other discussions this evening tend to focus on consistently outsourcing and regionalizing instead of building up our own community, improving our own services, and providing for the people in our community. I think that it's time that we start thinking about improving our infrastructure and improving the quality of life here in East Windsor instead of outsourcing and handing over to the surrounding communities.
Thank you.
Actually, I came here to ask another question, and then I got caught up in the bargaining room. Fran reminded me, and I wish I had caught it. I heard a couple of numbers floated around. What is the cost of these three questions going to this ballot? My understanding originally it was a paper ballot in a box, and somebody said to me, there's machines now. So the cost of that, in my head, is just going up. What is the cost of this October 24 event?
Mr. Mayner, could you elaborate on the process that will take place next week?
Chair, registrar in the, in the audience?
Sure.
All of us over here.
Angela, would you mind?
Estimated cost would be $5,000.
Will the-
Did you say $5,000?
Yes.
I said $5,000.
So, so to be clear, the question that, that was raised by Mr. Richards, and, and I was unclear of it as well, is it a machine vote or is it a ballot box vote?
It would be a machine vote.
Okay.
With paper absentees.
Correct. Because in the latest, the, the notice, the town clerk is deciding, and I agree, and I think chairman agrees, that the absentees had to be paper because we didn't have the printed ballots.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Richards, does that answer your question?
Unfortunately, yes.
Mr. Yagala.
Thank you. I want to say I agree with the woman in the front who made the comment about that we should be taking care of our buildings and taking care of our property. I want to point out a few things, however. This building is obsolete and deteriorated over the years to the $261,000 just to bring it up to the state level. And that's a shame because we probably would be having this discussion today about having to look for alternatives if that wasn't the case. The second thing is, unlike historic buildings or important valuable buildings, we need to recognize that these shelters, in smaller towns, were thrown together. This is a cinder block building. All these towns, all these towns put up these buildings in order to house the animals. And they, many of those animals, back in the old days, were euthanized. They didn't have the kind of care and the kind of, of way of looking at pets that we do these days. Thank goodness. The Tyler Shelter is a state-of-the-art, million-dollar facility and is drawn in Manchester, East Hartford, and South Windsor. They're all comfortable with that facility. It is a state-of-the-art facility that is taking us to a different place than we are currently. But I do agree, if you have deteriorating buildings, we need to maintain them. But this building is obsolete. It has deteriorated. It's not approved by the state for use as a shelter. We're only grandfathered in at this point, and we need to move on as a town and do something right for these animals. I'm gonna support the resolution when it comes up on the, on the 24th.
Mr. Ostrow and Mr. Leach.
So really quick, we said it was around $5,000. So we're basically spending about 10% of the money we've been using for this. Just make a vote on it.
Two other questions.
All, all three questions. Yes. Seems a little bit, I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Leach.
Just to clarify, this building also is a cinder block building. The Tyler Regional Facility is a brick building. The only thing state-of-the-art about it is the lighting and probably the interior paint. As far as our facility being deteriorated to the point where it needs $60,000 in repairs, it's simply the concrete runs, which are on the outside of the building, the exterior of the building, where the dogs can run outside, which they don't do in the Tyler Facility. Matter of fact, the Tyler Facility has a very small, probably half the size of our concrete runs, concrete run, and they also have a gravel area that they can run in. And there again, these improvements that the state has recommended are not necessary to be done at this time. They can be spread out over time. And I believe it's in our best interest to invest in our own building.
Mrs. Austin.
I have a question about the money for this building. Does it come out of the police fund or does it, is there a totally separate fund for this building? And has any money gone into this? Like, does somebody write a budget for this building? Where, where's it from?
For clarity, when you're, when you're saying this building, the existing one on Mill Street-
The existing one here.
That comes out of the property, I think it comes out of the property, town property budget.
I think it's the CIP for the $61,000.
The upgrades are out of CIP, but the operational costs currently come out of town property. There's a budget for town property that's administered by the Department of Public Works.
Sarah Muska, 25 Maple Avenue. I just want to make a statement. When the Board of Finance was going over its community renewal package, the appropriations, we were gonna put $20,000 into this facility. However, we had to stop because of the pending agreement and the negotiations going on with this. Just wanted to make everyone aware of that.
Other comments? Mrs. Baker.
Charlie Baker, G41 Rice Street. I was just wondering, in terms of how the animals, who pays? Do we pay more after the 10 days? You have to keep an animal for 10 days. And in the Hartford Pound, what happened is after the 10 days, if we didn't adopt the dog out, it was euthanized. And that's still the case at most animal control facilities because they can't keep the dog because other dogs come in. In East Windsor, what was really nice is we didn't have to worry about what was gonna happen after 10 days because we didn't, we weren't filled capacity ever at facilities like the Hartford Pound, which I believe is also, is that one of the towns? No, it isn't.
It is not.
You run out of space. So what is the capacity over there, I guess is my question? And how many stalls, because that's what they are, are available to East Windsor? Is it a set number? Or do you have so many? I mean, I'm just wondering whether you get pushed out and you gotta get rid of animals.
Mr. Mayner, can you answer on stall space and overrun?
Yeah, approximately. I think there's approximately 38 cages with it. Dogs can be housed. The, when I was there, there were six dogs, and little dogs and big dogs. If the shelters fill, then they have arrangements, they can bring dogs to other shelters. And as far as I know, no dogs are euthanized there.
Mrs. Baker.
Do you pay by the day? Or is that what the cost to the town is, by the day?
Yeah. More or less, yes.
So in East Windsor, we have a dog for any given amount of time, and we don't have to keep paying one. We're gonna have more expense if we pick up a dog and we're trying to not euthanize it. Then we have to, just the cost is gonna be more per day to take care of a dog. So that's not really in the figuring from what I can understand.
Okay. Do we know what the administrative fee for the, for the person as a facility manager, and outside of the regular fee that we're paying that's calculated by the number of dog days, this is an additional fee? Do we know what that's gonna be?
So the question is the distinction between the operational fee and the administrative fee. Am I correct?
Yes. What portion of the, do we know what the manager is gonna be paying, what our portion of that will be?
Mr. Mayner.
The total cost of that operating that shelter is $53,000 a year. That's the whole cost. And the way they break that money up for the towns who are, who are part of this regional center is to, just as I said, number of days that they use the shelter, dog days, we'll call them, or animal care days. And that's what they base dividing that $53,000 up into. And that's the annual cost of the, of the town.
For, for clarity, the, when I read the agreement, there was a discussion on the operational cost, and there was also mention of the administrative cost. And my recollection is that the fee is based on the operational cost, and administrative cost had not been assessed to date, but the agreement does allow that it could be in the future.
Well, if you go to page eight, administrative fees, section four, it says, in addition to the annual, what did each year, the governing board said in the annual administrative fee to be paid to the participating municipalities designated as the administrative manager of the facility, the administrative fee will be shared equally among the other participating municipalities. The administrative fee will be in addition to the participating municipalities' share of the annual expenses.
That is equally, not by percentage.
Right. And that's not by percentage.
Right. And in addition to-
So, so-
I don't know what the manager pays.
If we could just, through the chair, please. The, that question was asked at the selectmen's meeting, and the answer had been that it had, an administrative fee had not been assessed. The language does say that it could be, but it has not yet. This is the answer that was given.
But that's no comparison.
I know. I read it.
Okay.
Mr. Smansky.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment on a few things that people have said. And the South Windsor Police Chief, the Deputy Chief, and the Lieutenant in Charge of this program that they have, that they said they've never charged that administrative fee. They never expected they ever will do that. The whole program runs very, very well. The other towns that we spoke with, they said that they would never leave there because it's because they've worked so well without having something of their own. They have two people that come in there to feed the dogs, water the dogs during the day. They're high school people, from my understanding from that. In terms of, it was said that, you know, our facility is a block facility. That's a, a correct facility. It's really no difference. And this is what I'd like you all to do. Go there on Saturday to the South Windsor one and go to the one on Mill Street. Walk through there. You, you decide what, what you think is better. The facility in South Windsor, when they decided to change that from a fire station, but just to give you a backdrop here, there was a, it's called the Tyler Regional Animal Control Center. And the, the background is that there was a Chief Tyler in South Windsor, and he came from the West Coast. And when he came to this area, nothing was regionalized. That building was, was taken out of circulation for the fire department because they built a new building. So the town tried to sell it. They didn't get any bids. And it was his idea, well, maybe we could do this. And that's what they did. They spent over $600,000 renovating it. The floor has those big drains where the fire trucks were parked in there so they could drain off and whatever the heck they had to do. They had changed all those drains, but they're still big so they can wash the cages. The, the entire facility has central air conditioning. The entire facility is heated. All the cages are in the center of where you see the big roll-up doors where the fire trucks used to go in. They're in the center of that facility. So they're not against a cold wall or a hot wall or anything else. And you just need to go through there. They have a section on one side for birds. They have another part there where they can put other animals, like if someone gets a raccoon or whatever, they got somewhere to put it. And they have workstations set up for those animal control officers to be able to hook in and do their reports. And so look, look at it. Go there, go here, then, then decide what you want to do. But it, you'll be stunned by what the difference is. It's a vast, vast difference. It's really having, and, and the cages are not on the floor. Those animals are not on concrete. They're on a hard sheet of some kind of laminate that's inside the cages. And every day, they move over to the other side of the cage while that one's being cleaned. And then they're taken outside. Now, the lighting is phenomenal. There are people going in and out of there all the time. The police officers that are working midnights, all stop in there. I've driven by there. I've seen it. And I asked the, the South Windsor Animal Control Officer, you know, tell me any other problems, you know? Well, the only problem we have, sometimes the, the midnight guys stop in and they feed the animals. You know, they're getting fed more than they should, and they're getting fat. The other thing is regarding the animals, when they go there, that they have agreements with other regional centers. And if the dog has been there a long time, that, and it's not 10 days, a long time, then they move them to another regional shelter where there may be somebody in that area that might be fond of that particular- may be somebody in that area that might be fond of that particular dog. When you go there, in the front door, there's a vestibule there with seating, so if you wanna adopt a dog, we bring it out to you, you and your family, whoever it is, can sit there quiet to look at the dog, play with the dog, decide what it is that you wanna do. In terms of the cost, it's a little, it's not explained clearly, but it's not by the day. When we went to get the vestibule, what it was gonna cost is what our share was, they wanted to know what the number of dog days were in the prior year. In other words, if you had two dogs for two days, that's two dog days. And you heard we had 198, I think?
142.
148, okay. And that was over the course of a year. And so that's the information that they took and put into there. So then they give you the assessment of the 3%, which came to $1,670, I believe, is what our cost would be. So, you know, would that cost go up if there were more dogs? Well, not necessarily, because if the other towns also had an increase in more dogs, that yours would be proportionate, it may go down. But I don't see, logic tells you, that, you know, we're not gonna have twice as many dogs in town in one year or five years. You know, it's, they've got more there, because there's a greater population in those towns. Dick, you can remember this years ago, years ago, you know, in the 60s, and even some part in the 70s, there were a lot of wild dogs around town, you know, they used to run in packs and stuff. All that stuff is gone. These are people's pets that have gotten away from them, they got lost, they get picked up, and then they're brought there, or they've done damage to somebody, and they're brought there. But there's a very different understanding, once you see it, in really what the cost is. The cost is not what you're thinking, it's not based upon every day you get a charge for a dog. That's an annual charge, and then they'll look at the data come next year and see what it is. And if it comes that, you know, we don't think it's the right thing, it's too much money, we can pull out at any time. There's no penalty to pull out.
Do what? There's a penalty?
So, okay, we're gonna go through the chair. Mr. Leach, then Mr. Semenelli.
So through the chair, the selectmen said that we can pull out anytime you can. The day that we abandon our facility here, and as soon as the state finds out about it, we're no longer grandfathering. You'll have to build a new facility to meet the new regulations that are imposed. Keep in mind that the grandfathering applies to all towns, and there are many towns that are in the same situation that we are, that built dog pounds back in the 70s or so, and they're grandfathered, they're fine. We meet annual inspections every year. So we pass all the inspections, annually we're inspected, it's not an issue. As I mentioned, this is our dog's home that we've been using here in town, and like the selectmen said, I would suggest you go inspect both buildings. Look at ours, and look at the neglect that we've dealt with, and then look at South Windsor, and look at what we could be doing. Something I think is important to note, and it's gonna escape my mind for a moment, so I'll come back to it in just a minute.
At the risk of being improper, I would go with Mr. Semenelli, and then Mrs. Semenelli.
That is improper.
And I know. John.
John Semenelli, D. O. Street. Bob kind of answered, pardon my question, I mean, with 60-day notice, we can back out of this deal. Now, what we are obligated to do is pay up the cost over those 60 days. That's under, I think, 11, since the 60-days termination notice. So if we got into it and didn't like it, we lose our grandfather.
Right.
My question was around the grandfathering, does that mean we could not rehab the existing facility, we would have to build a brand-new facility?
The, I think the current regulations are such that we wouldn't be able to rehab our facility because of the size. You have to have X number of stalls for X number of population that you have in town, and I don't believe the new regulation in size for the kennel is large enough to where our building wouldn't be able to house all of them.
I'm sure all the codes have changed by now.
The, as a point of clarity, the substantial change in the code was the extension of the dog runs from an eight-foot run to a 10-foot run. That has been an issue for municipalities all over Connecticut, as they look to upgrade them.
So, so once you, once you get into this deal, it's a substantial cost, above the $60,000 to fix up the facility we have it. And why is the contract 10 years? That's a long time to go to the dance with somebody. I mean, five years, three years, 10 years. You're working on 25. It is more like 30 between.
Mrs. Semenelli.
So I kinda wanna go back, we talked about stress of dogs when they're in bigger groups than smaller groups, we talked about the ability of our dogs to go outside in East Windsor, and they're not really going outside, and they, in fact, apparently don't even have windows in the South Windsor facility. People being able to come in and at least comfort our dogs when they're here, versus not having access to do that in South Windsor. Health issues, when you put a whole bunch of dogs, they come from random places in one place, that's an issue as well. The time that police officers may have to spend, to me, that's a bigger issue than we've discussed, because if I'm one of the two police officers on shift, and I'm, well, really anywhere in our town, and my partner for the night is locked up in South Windsor Shelter logging in a dog, and something bad happens, and I need his assistance, he's a long ways away, I don't care if it's 10 minutes, or 20 minutes, or 30 minutes, it's too far. And I think we have two guys on shift at night, and to...